Mr. Grove?
Present.
Mr. LaFerla?
Present.
Mr. Geseyer?
Present.
Dr. Agress?
Present.
Ms. Riley?
Present.
Mr. Hanson?
Present.
All right, would you please stand in a moment of silence and then join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, tonight we will start our meeting with "We Are Proud of Our Schools" introductions. Dr. Bruckner?
Thank you very much, Dr. Agress. I am pleased tonight to tell you why all these people are here. Almost all of these people are here to celebrate one gentleman who was selected as an Employee of the Month but could not make it to our last meeting. So let me call him on up here and say nice things about Randy Lau.[87.81][87.81](APPLAUSE). It's the biggest cheering section anybody's ever had, so good for you.
They're getting extra credit for being here.[100.11][100.11](LAUGHING).
Randy Lau has been working with the Council Bluff School District for 26 years. Here's what Randy's nominators from our schools shared about him. Randy is able to hold students to a high standard of conduct while expressing a sincere desire to get to know their personal interests and goals. Randy promotes preparedness for our changing world through his course programming. Over the past year, students who take part in his courses have had the distinct privilege of being part of cutting-edge programming related to video broadcasting of games at Wicker Sham Stadium. Randy is currently in the process of sharing his work with other school districts in the metro area, bringing positive attention to our Council Bluff District as a whole. The new addition of a giant video display board at Gale-Wicker Sham Stadium has served as a catalyst for students, under the direction of Mr. Lau, to create incredible pre-game and in-game video production. These shows have simply created a magical game time experience to the delight of fans. In a short amount of time, Mr. Lau has had his students operating at high level where all the daily classroom preparation preceding the Friday night game plays out before a live audience of anywhere between 700 to 2,500 people in the grandstands. It's been a pure delight to observe Mr. Lau interacting directly with his students under Friday night lights, as he communicates with them over headsets, sometimes sharing, "We're learning together, that's the important thing." One can easily observe the confidence growing in the students as they apply their knowledge and technical skills in such a rich, authentic learning environment. Mr. Lau is truly demonstrating his abilities as they relate to our mission to prepare students in an ever-changing world and creating a path forward for our students to take skills and passion into post-secondary options and future careers. Randy is supported here tonight by his wife, as well as Tucker Center Principal Kyle Forney and other members of his fan club. You, if you have been to the stadium this year, have seen the work that Mr. Lau has brought to the screen, and the wonderful thing about it is that it truly is students and adults learning together, which is really what happens in real life. So, Mr. Lau, on behalf of the Board of Education, in partnership with the community at Foundation, here is your trophy, Licensed Staff Employee of the Month, along with a $50 gift certificate from CEF and Harrah's 360 State House. Enjoy.[265.11][265.11](APPLAUSE). I can tell a personal story. There were times that we were not sure this was all going to be up and running on day one, and you've done a magnificent job.
I just wanted to thank the Board for your support and Dr. Bruckner for everything that you've let the CTE programs do. And when I found out about this video board, it's the first time in 27 years that I was really excited to get back to school.[297.31][297.31](LAUGHING). I'm not, every year, but this was a little bit different. Week one and two, it was a couple of teachers and three students, I think, that they'd been in school for two days, and we're doing some things that are just wonderful, I think. By week nine, I had been demoted to Gatorade Boy.[320.01][320.01](LAUGHING). Little Zach is in the back room there. He did the whole first half as a director, and we had another student, Kayden. He did the second half, and when they got thirsty, they'd, "Mr. Lau, we need a drink."[335.11][335.11](LAUGHING). So, that is my idea of an ideal classroom. And it really, it's the biggest classroom in the state of Iowa, so...
It is.
And one more thing, the Daktronics representative told me that there are a lot of different schools that have a video board like that, but none of them are doing what our students are doing, which I'm really proud of.
Yeah, yes.
Thank you. My favorite story so far this year is when the president of the local community college was there to be interviewed by someone from Cox Communication, and he walked over to one of our reporters, thinking that's who he was going to meet. So, you guys are doing a great job.
Congratulations. All right, next up on our agenda? Approval of our agenda? Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve our agenda.
Second.
And there's the second, Mr. Wilson. Any discussion? Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion approved. Approval of the minutes? Is there a motion?
I move approval of the minutes.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion approved. This is an opportunity for public participation. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address the Board? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to our superintendent's report, Student Achievement. Dr. Bruckner?
Thank you very much. Our first report under Student Achievement is a report on preschool program and kindergarten readiness, and that involves Julie Smith and our new consultant, Joan Crowell.
John's right behind you.
So, thank you, and I would like to take a minute to introduce Joan Crowell. Joan, as Dr. Bruckner mentioned, is doing preschool consulting with us. She has a very long and rich background in elementary education and early childhood. She was once with Council Bluff Schools and is back again with us at this role. She will be providing leadership on teacher growth and development for preschool teachers, the curriculum revision process, student recruitment and placement. And then she'll also consult with us on some of our preschool grants and compliance issues at the state level. So her, she has a pretty wide breadth of things that she's going to be talking with us about, but tonight she's going to specifically share with you about what she and the preschool leadership team are working on this year.
Thank you, Julie, and thank you all for this invitation back to get to work with the Council Bluff Schools. I see some familiar faces, so that's really exciting. I'm very, I guess, privileged to have the opportunity to come and share my passion for working with our youngest learners, so thank you for that opportunity. The first thing that I'd like to kind of share is our work with teacher leadership. And as Julie alluded to, some of that work is really tapping into the strengths of the staff that we have in the district, and we really have some very talented preschool teachers. I'm excited to say that we developed a curriculum pilot team that is comprised of veteran teachers, new teachers, teachers that teach general ed as well as special ed students. Those members are Tina Jones, Danielle Philman, Heather Thomas, Nicole Marco, Alyssa Knaff, Frances Cantrell, and Tracy Frush. And we've had one day together, and our work has really been around trying to align the district standards that already exist with the state standards and with best practices, so that we are ensuring that we are providing a quality-rich experience focused on literacy for our youngest learners. Part of that is obviously studying what is out there and what is current, and trying to pilot those literacy practices with a curriculum by Dr. Laura Justice called Read It Again. And that curriculum uses really rich texts with young children in a more formalized intentional instructional way. This way, we assure that even for our youngest learners in preschool, we are ensuring that we're teaching the concepts about print to them, developing the vocabulary, and building comprehension skills. So it's very exciting to have the opportunity to work with these leaders across the district in this pilot, and hopefully by the end of this year, the beginning of next year, we will have an entire curriculum map of those practices that align to standards and state what it is that our learning targets are going to be, what resources we use, and what activities we're going to use to get to those learning targets, as well as what skills and strategies we want to be teaching. So that then also aligns with our professional development for this year. Our professional development is two-pronged. We are really focusing on our adult-child interactions. Those are very, very critical because they develop a language base. Besides building relationships to develop the social-emotional aspect of a very young child, it also helps build a rich language that helps start the foundation for building on future literacy skills. And the other is, we will continue what they started last year called the Project Approach, and in that aspect, the teachers have three intentional projects that they work on throughout the school year that develops from student interest, but they expand it, and it'll have, once again, it connects literacy, math, science, social studies, all of the curriculum areas. And then our study for literacy will be woven in throughout each of those professional development topics. We plan to go probably much, much deeper into literacy next year, once the curriculum maps are developed and we're able to roll that out. So, we've kind of have a two-year focus here, and we're just at the beginning stages of that.
So I have the more fun job about talking about our resources in preschool. You probably noticed in your Board packet that our resources are coming to a point where our expenditures keep going up, and our resources are either steady or going down or not quite going up at the same rate as our expenditures. We have a grant that funds our preschools at Rue and Roosevelt called Shared Visions, and that grant actually was bumped up over the past couple of years, and it's at a pretty good spot. We're also funded partially by special education, about seven teachers, or five teachers and three teachers part-time, along with several apparel positions, and those funds kind of adjust to the costs that are associated with them. But we have three other funding sources that aren't meeting the pace. The first one that we want to talk about is Iowa West. Iowa West is very generous to us, but they have funded us at the same amount for the past five years. That has not increased at all. Promise Partners has funded us for several years, but over the past five years, that has decreased by about $20,000 from five years ago until today. And then our statewide funding has increased at about $130,000 over the last five years, but our salaries have increased at about $245,000. So as you're kind of thinking about that and doing the math with that, you're seeing a gap getting bigger and bigger. We've been able to sustain our programs up until this point because two years ago, three years ago, we had a fairly good carryover from kind of a, we weren't funded correctly one year, and we got quite a hefty amount of money from the state, and we've been living off that carryover to make up that difference over the past several years. And now we're at the point where we have to make some decisions about what are we going to do and how are we going to do it. And so currently, Becky Zorn and Joan and I are beginning some initial talks about what are some ideas, how might this work with the money that we have. As I said, we're sitting pretty good in Shared Visions. How might we leverage some of that? We just have some ideas right now that we're starting to explore and look into that will make recommendations coming up to Dr. Bruckner with what we think we need to do next year to make sure that we're not exceeding our funds that we have for preschool and still serving as many kids as we possibly can. So that's the bad news portion of the day. However, we have some great celebrations that I would like to tell you about. This year, for the first time, you probably also noticed in your Board packet that we have, we have used an assessment called, the short name is called IGDS, and that stands for the Individual Growth and Development Indicators. This is a screener that is very similar to our FAST screener that we do in kindergarten through sixth grade. It's developed by the same company, and it's administered in much the same way. And so as you know, the screener is really designed to say, "Let's cast out this net and see how many kids may need additional assistance to be successful," in order to be able to read at grade level, because this is all around literacy. And so what's really nice about the IGDS is we can kind of do a comparison, it's a pretty loose comparison this year, but a comparison between how our preschoolers come in and how they start kindergarten. And so what you saw in your data, which was not surprising in preschool, is that when we screened our kids this year in preschool, we only screened our four-year-olds, only 13% of our students were proficient on the IGD assessment. So meaning, we had a large, a very large number, 83% of our kids are not proficient when they enter us in preschool. That's not a surprise to us. We have known, and that has been our target group for years, to come in and help our kids who are most at risk. So we're succeeding in that aspect when we look at it. But the good news is when you couple that with what we see in kindergarten. By kindergarten, 52% of our kids start school proficient overall. But when you look at just the kids who attended our district preschool, that number is actually 61%. So if you're thinking they're starting in around 13% and 61% are ready for kindergarten when they come out of our preschool, I would say that's a pretty huge celebration that we have. Next year, we'll be able to match kid for kid what that looks like. This is just based on generalities, but boy, it really looks like a thing to celebrate when we're talking about that. So, along with that, just kind of looking at some of our kindergarten readiness with our FAST data, one thing that we saw this year was just a very slight increase in our FAST data at kindergarten coming in. So last year, we were at 51%, this year we're at 52% of our kids proficient on FAST when they start. As you know, we tend to see a pretty big increase in that over the kindergarten year, which is also a great thing to see. That compares to the state, 68% of kids entering the kindergarten in the state of Iowa are proficient. So we still know that we have a group of kids that really don't come to us with the skills that they need to just be successful, just like that. We also know that about 35, only 35% of our kids coming to us with no preschool experience are proficient on the FAST when they enter. And so one of the things that would be, I mean, all of you know this, you say this every year, "Oh, my gosh, if we could only serve all kids in preschool, what a difference that would make," and it truly would. And not that data is exciting, but it is kind of nice to see that we are making a difference in what we're doing in the lives of those kids. So, that's kind of the nice news to end on. So what are we going to do next, our next steps? Obviously, we need to monitor the IGDS. Those will be given three times this year, in the winter and then again in the spring, so we can see that impact on that assessment as we go along. Our other big one, as we talked about, is really determining what services are we going to be able to offer within our budget for next year and how we're going to do that. And then another thing that we'd really like to do is revise, and Joan will have the biggest part in this, is revising our child find and screening process so we can get kids placed earlier. It was really tough this year, and it gets tough on families when we can't make a commitment to them well in advance of school starting, so they can get other arrangements as needed or knowing that they're going to be there. So we want to revise that so we can help our families get placed earlier than we have in the past. So, questions from you?
Can you tell us a little bit about the GOLD assessment?
Sure. The GOLD assessment, it's a different kind of assessment, and really, it's designed so that the IGDS and the GOLD are kind of a hand-in-hand assessment system. And so the GOLD is more of a, it looks at the whole child, not just literacy, so it has all the components in there, and it's really designed to look at the whole child, and it's an observational assessment. And so teachers and associates in the classroom have kids in various situations where they can look and say, "Oh, how is their language in here?" Or how are the, they have indicators on each thing that they're looking for. They do that three times a year as well, and so they just mark those as they go along. And typically, we've always seen in our GOLD, you know, kids start out with a lot of lagging skills, and by the end, many of our kids, like almost in the 90s in the areas, are proficient on the GOLD assessment. So it just measures a different thing and looks at it in a different way.
Your scores are impressive for this year.
And that is one of, I mean, both IGDS and GOLD are highly recommended or required by the state to give three times a year.
You're doing a great job.
I have a question about finances. I was reading somewhere where the state gives you special categorical funding for half-day programs versus full day? And this article said that a lot of schools do not have very many half-day programs because parents don't want them.
That we find that to be true with us as well.
And therefore, the half-day funding stream has money in it that can't be transferred to the full day.
Is that correct?
I'm not aware of that.
Well, that was the argument, that the legislature needs to loosen the purse strings on that if parents aren't going to take advantage of the half-day preschool program, because they said one school district had a million bucks sitting in a half-day program that they can't use anywhere else. And this didn't make any sense to me.
The statewide voluntary preschool program funds for 10 hours or more a week of preschool, so it doesn't ever fund a whole day of preschool programming. Some of the other state monies like Shared Visions and more of the competitive grants that are there may have different half-day or preschool implications with that. You can use those for either one. But the Shared Visions, which is for the four-year-olds, is just a flat, it's half of a regular K-12 student...
But that's for the full-day program.
It can be used for half or full. You have to operate at least 10 hours a week of preschool time.
But you can't use more than half of the funding.
Yeah, you only get that funding. Each child just gets so much, and it funds about a half a day.
So would you explain, because most of our programs are full day, would you explain how we have done that?
Sure.
Because it's a very complicated system that we have the possibility of doing, and many smaller districts wouldn't have, but it's really interesting.
Right.
So this is not, this is not an issue for our school district, is what you're saying?
Well...
I'll let Julie answer.
Well, the carryover that you're talking about with one of the districts, we've eaten ours up.
Yes.
Which is what the legislature wanted us to actually do, and we've made a purposeful intent to do that, so we don't have a large carryover, so we don't get blowback from the legislature saying, "How come you even spent the money?"
But the way we use it is that we can only spend, we can only support half-day programs. So in order for them to come full day, we have to find the money somewhere else.
Correct.
If we didn't have Iowa West, especially, because Iowa West funds about 19 of our classrooms, about half-days of 19 of our preschool classrooms. You know, the Promise Partners funds approximately two half-days program of the other half of day, because a program costs approximately $100,000 a year between the associate and the teacher and expenditures. And when you look at 16 kids in a class at the rate of $36,000, is that what it is? Leontine, I don't know.
Thirty-six hundred, you mean.
Thirty-six thousand would be better.[1471.91][1471.91](LAUGHING).
You wish.
I do wish.
Yeah.
Right, half of 66.
Right, and so when you're looking at, it funds about half of that program, and you need that other source to make it a full-day program. And so that's how we're able to do it where others aren't, because we, again, Iowa West is so generous in what they give us. It'd be great if we could even get more, but they're very generous, but that allows us to have as many full-day programs as we have. And like the article mentioned with us, we have four-year-olds turning down preschool because it's a half-day, parents can't make a half-day program work for kids because of work, because of daycare, those types of things. So, we do have people turn us down for, we offer that we can't fill.
Well, it sounds to me like this is an issue that we need to make the legislature aware of.
Certainly is. We certainly need the legislature to support preschool for more than half-day, because what they've done, Julie and her team and others before her, have figured out how to put it together. So when you talk about how we fund preschool, it's very complicated, but it's kind of miraculous. But if you are in a small district that doesn't have the wherewithal to fund that other half, you can't use the first half if you don't get kids to come. So it's a problem. If we believe in preschool as much as we do, the legislature needs to fund it, not just let you use your carryover, but fund it at much higher than .5. That's been something we've asked for multiple times. Very good point.
So the article is not far off reality, is what I'm saying. You know, you read a lot, and sometimes you wonder if it's really accurate. But in our district, we don't have lots of dollars in that account.
Correct.
Sitting there and not being used.
We've eaten up all of it, or most of it.
By the end of this year, it'll...
Okay.
And am I correct, we almost always can find space in one of the half-day programs?
It is a hard, yeah. Joan and her team have been working very hard to get those filled, and we still have some openings in there that we plan to fill. We have screenings all year long that will bring kids into, but it is very hard to get four-year-olds especially.
Because parents can't get their kids there for half a day.
Yeah. It is.
Is it possible, does our half-day specifically have to be just the half-day on that day, or can we do a full-day one day and then have a day off? And because it's between the two days, you're only getting one full day, could we count that as a half-day? Yes, such as if the parent knew on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday of this week, my child will be in preschool, Tuesday and Thursday in daycare, and then the following week, Monday, Wednesday, Friday in daycare, Tuesday and Thursday in the preschool, and we simply alternate like that, would the funding allow us to do that using all half-day funding? Or does the half-day funding specifically say only so many hours per day?
It's so many hours per week that you have to go by. So yes, the funding would allow you to be a little bit flexible with that, and that is a great idea, something that we need to start looking at and considering about how we're going to, how we might make things work differently and still serve the amount of kids. So, thank you for that suggestion.
What are the guidelines used to determine who qualifies for placement?
We have several. We start, income is a guideline for almost every one of our grants. It's not for state money, but because we blend all of our money in order to do the full-day programming, income is always a factor and probably our highest factor, and there's different levels of income that we would look at. We also screen all our kids coming in with what's called the Denver Developmental Screening Scale, and so then we also look at the most needy kids, who are the most developmentally delayed or look like they'll have the most problems. That's our next criteria that we would look at. Then after, we fill slots with kids that meet both of the criteria, which we can fill lots of slots at. Yeah, then we have secondary at-risk factors that we would also look at, and those could be things like premature baby, parent in jail, a parent not graduated from high school. So we have a list of secondary risk factors that we also consider when we were looking at placement, but those are the three big ways that we would look at things.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Not so much a question, but more of a comment and an observation. If we look back in the history of Council Bluff School District, we have a rich, we are rich in people that support preschool. I mean, I look back at my first year on the Board, Board members Bob Ed Barron's and at the time Gina Malloy pushed through preschool funding at the IASB convention, and it passed through, and it didn't get funding that year, but in 2005, I believe it was, 2005, 2006, we got funding for four-year-old preschool. Marvin Arndt Priester is a passionate advocate for preschool, and now that we see that our legislators are... that, that our legislators are, are putting, putting benchmarks in place, making our third graders, of which we fully support, requiring reading at grade level by the end of third grade, obviously, they, they must know that preschool funding is, is a key to meeting that challenge of grade-level reading. We were at 60% funding during the first program and then they decided, well, you know, preschool students are only a half a student. They're really small. They don't take up much space, you know, or some reason of that nature. But our students are the most fragile learners that, and we have, as a district, sought out those students that need, need that additional support so that they can be successful in kindergarten and beyond. So I've heard from our legislators saying that, oh, it's, it's a luxury to be able to, to have a preschool program. No, it's not a luxury. It's a necessity because our students need that. And not just our students, but the students in the state of Iowa need that additional support. And half of, half a student doesn't cut it. In most cases, even more than 1.0 full-time equivalent is needed to meet the, the resource needs of, of those students. So I can assure you, as, as your delegate for the Assembly, I, I will wholeheartedly support and, and defend our need for additional funding for, for preschool, using the argument that this is the least expensive way that we can support grade-level reading that's available. There are countless studies that tell us, the dollar that we spend in preschool gives us anywhere from three to $26 in return, depending on whose study we look at. So it's, it's money wisely spent that, that our students need. So count on me being that continued voice for our students at the Assembly.
Thank you, Mr. Cozire. Thanks.
Thank you.
Moving on to our informational presentations, we have Dr. Buckner, Certified Enrollment.
That's right. This is the bearer of good news. You may give applause.
Great news.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'm sure you already guys already looked at your board report. I'm sure Martha's already emailed you out many, many times. The good news that we have... That's not my slide. So this is a 2016 Certified Enrollment Report. We certify with the state on time this year, as we always do. We had no, just across the state, we got praise. There were only 25 duplicate students across all districts in Iowa, which the state people were very happy with. It's an unheard-of number for them. Just, I mean, just in our district alone, I mean, 9,000-some kids. You think of Des Moines and the other UEN districts, only have 25 students. Both said they had the student. Was, is crazy to think we're getting that accurate of data. We did not have any of those 25. To move on, Certified Enrollment this year was 9,256.89. That's a weighted total, which is up 130.9 students, weighted.
Yay!
Which, if Dean, if I remember right, it's about $863,000 of increase, of funding for next year.
Yes.
Excellent.
Great news.
We're excited.
As you can see, our trend since 2013, we've been on the upward trend, which is also a good sign that we're having more students in our district. This is total age students provided instructional programs by our district is also up 104 students. Again, this is another weighted total. So just like Julie was talking about earlier, preschoolers are half. So out of the 370, we got 160 counts of kids for that.
So that's where the majority of our percentage is coming from, preschool?
Our lower grades are about 700 each, which is staying average. I think we're up another 20 students in Certified Enrollment also.
Darn. And it's good, but darn.
I, I understand. I agree with you.
Over there on August 1st, October 1st.
October 3rd this year. And then there's always so many numbers to look at. This is the SRI, the Student Reporting in Iowa, Bodies and Seats Counts, which is pretty much the students that we have here or take care of in programs. We were up 63 students at 9,188. So that's more comparable to like the Third Day Enrollment Report. Which are all, we're all on the plus, positive numbers this year. And then I believe in your board report, I did show one, the tuition out, no, the open and rolled out also went up. But with our numbers going up like they did and that number all still going up, it's kind of amazing that we're still on this upward trend.
And the number of open and roll in was lower than last year, a little bit lower than last... Yeah.
Negligible.
Yeah.
Are there any questions?
Is this enrollment increase happening across all grade levels? Or you mentioned the lower grades are 700. I mean, do you, what's going on? We have more houses being built in our district or...
Apparently we have more, younger families having more kids.
I don't think it's new, new homes in our community because there really aren't that many places for new homes. But we may have more people moving into the homes that are there.
Well, all this senior housing that we're building, went by Gunn School today. Man, that's amazing what they've done there with that. I mean, there's got to be homes available when those people move in there, right?
Seller's market right now. Houses are...
What's that?
Selling. Houses are selling quickly.
Well, maybe people want to, want to be in our district. That's good.
Well, we, we hypothesize that our district has a reputation that continues to increase and people are more and more willing to be in our district. But not only our district, I think our community as a whole. Council Bluffs is different than it was 10 years ago. And there is so much growth and so much attention to making our community stronger that I think more and more people are thinking this is a good place to come.
Well, too, the study that we had six years ago indicated that we would bottom out about three or four years ago and then, and then increase in, in enrollment steadily. So it's...
And the, the state does have that enrollment projections out and we beat that the last three years. This year, I mean, destroy, I mean, we are way, way above their projection.
It is really, I went to a UEN meeting last week and was talking to the superintendents there and they were talking about enrollment and quite a few of them had decreased in enrollment. And there was a group of four or five and somebody had up 17 and up 24 and up 30. And I didn't say a word. I didn't want them to be mad at me. And they finally said, well, what, how is it in Council Bluffs? I said, oh, well, we're kind of up 130. And they all looked like, what's going on in Council Bluffs? So we just need to keep it going. It's not only important that it's up, it's important that it's up four years in a row. That needs to be our continued trend. Until such time that Susan here can tell me, I told you so. And I'm waiting for that.
Any other questions from board members? Thanks very much.
Thanks, John.
All right. Next topic is update on progress related to Strategic Plan Two.
We're going to talk about benchmarks first.
We're going to talk about benchmarks first.
Is that okay?
And then we'll talk about Strategic Plan Number Two.
Board members have in front of them a larger copy of benchmarks. You know, you know that we have kind of quietly collected benchmarks for quite a few years. We started it about nine or 10 years ago. And thanks to Marty Schudek for sure and Corey Vorthman. Last year, there was a push, let's make these a little more formal. And let's be sure that once a year, we give a report to the board. And last year, we gave it in October. So we're bringing you this report. The actual document has another page over here that talks about what our goal is. But we thought for tonight's meeting, just to let you know the numbers, there still are some holes in there. There's quite a few holes still under human resources. And Toby will be filling those in when she makes her annual report, which is in November. But we want to compare November to November. So any of us would be glad to answer any questions, but we want you to know that we're collecting this data. We made a very conscious decision this year about which of these data points to include in our annual report. The whole executive cabinet went through every one of these one by one and said, that's a, that's a point that should be there. And the rest of them are available on our website. So. Opened any questions, but we just thought you should have the information. And if that's, if you have no questions, I'm going to go off here.
Talk about strategic planning.
That would be great.
Board members, you have all seen this on a quarterly basis since we started this, the first strategic plan in 2008. This is our quarterly report on the strategies that we implemented this year. And you know that several of these are carryover from last year. But this is our first report for this year. So in your board report, you have details and it's all in black because there's no red. Next time we do this, we'll have some red, which tells you about ongoing progress. So you all know that our strategic plan supports all our kids and it is based upon our mission, which is to guarantee that every child graduates with the knowledge, skills, and character to become a responsible citizen and to succeed in a changing world. The rest of our mission talks about what we do to make sure that happens. There are 13 plans that we are working on this year. This plan, as you got in your board packet, talks about we are doing some focusing of professional development on instructional practices. Just last week, we had representatives of the Department of Education from Des Moines come and help both our elementary leaders and our secondary leaders talk about just how are we defining effective instructional practices and how are we going to measure implementation of those. Strategy 1.4 talks about communicating to the community about the achievement of schools, of our school system and the schools specifically. And Diane shared at the principals' meeting a template that we're going to have for all of our schools so that they're all sharing similar information available on their website, et cetera, so that we're all talking the same terminology from school to school. 1.7 is to come up with a systemic protocol for determining movement among tiered intervention services in literacy. This also works with our differentiated accountability supported by the Department of Ed as we're measuring where kids are on the tier system related to literacy and how they move forward. And as Julie pointed out in her report, we keep adding measures to that to help us be sure that we're having accurate, accurate assessments of how our kids are doing in literacy. 2.1 is repeated from last year, increased district-wide family engagement. Tim Hamilton is leading this strategy. You have in front of you tonight a job description that's going to support this. And it has to do with a bilingual family liaison, which we're going to cut back on some overtime to add a second position. And this part-time position will be primarily to engage families that are, families of English learners. So that's just one strategy. You, you had a report in your packet about some others. 2.3 talks about ways of increasing our communication to business and district connections about what our strengths are and our positive impact. We think we have all sorts of things to talk about. I mean, we've had almost nothing but good news so far this school year. So this is just to be sure that we are getting that word out to all of the people in our community. 2.4 is a repeat from a couple of years. We've really worked on this for two years, but what we want to do is to be sure that we have a program that instills in all of our employees the fact that our initial response and our ongoing response to all of our stakeholders is customer-friendly, that we are there to help them. So we outlined in the report some things that we have done and some things that we continue to do. Diane and I have some work to do if we're going to get a report out by the end of October. We may not do that. We're, that's our goal. 3.3 talks about developing nurture, some advocates to the legislature. We did this last year. We started this last year. That's not true. We continued this last year. We strengthened it last year. So we finally decided to put 3.3 up so that we'd be focusing on it this year. Dean and I traveled to Des Moines last week for a joint meeting of business officials and superintendents to talk about legislative messages. And our encouragement to our lobbyists is that we make them simple and memorable and very clearly to the point of what we want. I would like us to take out our, all jargon and have as few words as possible, but get to the point of this is what we need. For instance, we need our funding set in the first 30 days, or if that doesn't happen, we need a formula that automatically checks in. Those are the kind of simple words we should use. So we're working on this. We will continue to work with our parents and community members who are interested in advocating for us also. 4.1 is to come up with a comprehensive approach to be sure that all of our employees are getting necessary training, support, and resources. Toby and I sat in on Friday with 85 of our nutrition services employees who had a full day of work on a trade day. Teachers, administrators had the day off because they'd gone to parent-teacher conferences, but we used it as a really good opportunity to do some training with our nutrition staff because we're being pushed to be sure everybody has it. You also know from the report that we've been trying to do a better and better job in being sure that our paraeducators have the training they need to go forward. 5.1 is, if Troy were here, he'd smile at me or point his finger at me. We need to be sure that we know exactly the academic skills and non-cognitive skills and knowledge. Our kids should have that about post-secondary option, options. And we need to assess how well we're doing that. And Corey and Jason and Kyle have a team that's working on that and they are purposefully, Corey says, we're going to knock this one out of the park this year. It's a baseball reference. Because we want to, we want to be kind of ahead of the push throughout the state to do this. They've got a good plan. 6.2 is to come up with interventions, both internally and externally, to support behavior and mental health with a structured plan. Tim Hamilton, who can't, is not here tonight, laughingly says that his department is supposed to figure out how to solve and measure everything related to behavior and mental health in, in a year. And that's what we expect. 6.5 is to help our parents, also under Tim's guidance, to understand mental abuse, substance abuse, and mental health and behavior issues. So he said to me, so like, that's all you want me to do this year, those three things? And I said, that would be enough. 7.4 moves to technology. We want to implement innovative, technology-based learning experiences to connect, collect, collaborate, organize, and share and publish. So this is an ongoing push to help our kids be ready for their next learning experiences. I can give Dave kudos in front of you. If you give Dave a strategy and action plan, it is done in a year. And so he's already working on that. And he is going to tell you a little bit about 7.5, our last strategy, which we said was to expand the number of portable computing devices available, grades PK2 for early adopter classrooms. And here's Dave to tell you what we're doing on this.
So apparently I was the only one who's going to be here tonight, so I got to pick it up. Actually, this strategy, the pre-K2 strategy, is the second part of our 312 One-to-One initiative, which we've already implemented. And it was pretty apparent and clear from our teaching and learning colleagues that grade two was not, not really a consideration. They want Chromebooks in, in second grade. Letter recognition and keyboarding are starting. So Dr. Vorthman and I scrambled around and realized that some Title I funds, along with some, some monies I was able to, to save from different sources, would, would be enough to take care of a second-grade implementation. So we went ahead and did that. Obviously, our Title I schools from Title I funds, we had some carryover, which we're using for that. And then the non-Title I schools from technology funds. So beginning tomorrow at Longfellow and then continuing through the week and probably into early next week, second-grade teachers will see one device per student in second-grade classrooms, Acer C740 Chromebooks, exactly the same ones we're using in middle and high school, and most likely the ones we'll refresh our elementary schools with next year. But... Does anybody want to see one or... Or, you know, I would also, I noticed that Dr. Ogres noticed the Chromebooks that are at the board table, and those are the devices that our teachers are using now. We are in the process of transitioning teachers from Windows PCs to Chromebooks, not every teacher, but most. And about a third of our teachers will be upgraded this year, and it was time for the board computers as well. So it's likely that your batteries will last the whole meeting now.
Yay!
And as those computers turn four and five years old, and it was time for them to go in natural cycle away, these would be, what would be a natural replacement for teachers as well. So that's what you will also see at the board meetings, but a little larger device than the student device. So that's exciting stuff. Our second-grade teachers are really excited to get their devices into their classrooms here in the next week or so. And then this team will continue to figure out pre-K1, which is different because students don't have letter recognition, fine motor skills that are necessary for keyboarding, et cetera. So the thinking is that some sort of a touch device is the right device at those grades, and we're working on figuring out, you know, which ones to test, which will take place this year, so that we would have a recommendation next year for what we're going to do with those young learners in pre-K1.
Google just came out with a phone.
The Pixel phone.
Yeah. Do they have a touch device yet?
There is a touchscreen Chromebook. There is a touchscreen Chromebook that exists. We have some of those in testing. We've learned from our, you know, the past few years of trying out several devices there that we've found some devices we don't like very much, too, and that's okay. So we've set those aside, and there are a number of possibilities. And we have a team of about 15 teachers who are more than willing to pilot these new devices in their classrooms. They are our early adopters, and we're working with them all throughout this year to figure it out. Absolutely. My gut feeling is the batteries are probably dead, so. Second grade is the same as third through 12th grade. It's the same device.
So are we going to bring the second grade into the same rotation schedule with the third through 12th graders, while keeping the pre-K in first grade in their own schedule?
Pre-K1 will end up being its own unit. And I think that as, you know, devices were deployed across the district, the second-grade teachers, right away, became pretty confident that the right device was a computer with a keyboard and a more traditional device. And they were, they've all had Chromebooks in their classrooms, just not one for every kid, you know, more like three, four, or five devices in a classroom. So that model at second grade is, I hate to say universally, but, you know, very widely accepted as the right device. So the feedback to teaching and learning was, let's just move forward with second grade because there doesn't seem to be any, you know, any research to do. Pre-K1 is different.
All right. Does anybody else have any other questions?
Great.
Thank you, Mr. Binger.
So this plan is actually ahead of where we thought we would be because we're talking about all second graders having it instead of just in the early adopter classrooms. And all of it leads to, this is our goal, we talk about all the time, helping students be ready, and we think we are doing that. So thank you for giving us time and giving us the challenge on a quarterly basis to tell you what we're doing. Any questions, I can answer.
If any of us were so inclined to observe, wanting, want to observe a professional development session, what process would you ask that we go through to observe at any level, or if that would be possible?
We would love to have you observe professional development. If you tell us what area you'd like to talk about, what grade level, secondary, elementary, middle school, would you like to see a day when they talk about technology, curriculum development, whatever. Melissa Chlebnik would probably be the person I would connect you with to work that out. But I think you would be very impressed if you came and observed some of the learning that's going on. Our teachers work really hard in using that time and helping each other learn. Professional learning communities in our district are definitely alive and well.
Well, that was just in reference to the strategic plan 1.1, I think it was, or something like that.
Right.
To see how that part is being implemented in the district.
One of the things you could come to is any of our CBU, Council Bluffs University courses, which are after-school. They've already started this year, and those are, as you recall, voluntary. Teachers can come. They get paid to come. They're very carefully planned. Teachers that teach them get paid to teach, and that's a much better way than making everybody get together and just have the same learning, so. The professional development for nutrition staff Friday ended in a very nice way. I didn't know about it until I went to the session. They took two buses to the Gail Wickersham Stadium and just let all of the nutrition workers find out what we've done over there in case they hadn't been there. We also allowed the nutrition workers to write their own story about what a lunch lady does during the day. If I think of it, I'll put that in ABC notes because it's kind of a fun story. So, thank you.
All right. Move on to our resolutions. The first resolution is approval of Iowa West Council of Members nomination. Is there a motion?
I would move to nominate the six nominees for the Iowa West Council of Members: Bob Ed Behrens, Roger Corlin, Barry Cleveland, Paul Hamilton, Cindy Keathley, and Judy O'Brien.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second in by Ms. Riley. Any discussion?
Could you just explain what this, this one?
I certainly can. Iowa West Foundation, on an almost annual basis, asks several bodies in the community to nominate members. The Chamber of Commerce, the Community Education Foundation, no, the Council Bluffs Community Schools. I think maybe the Board of Supervisors, County Board of Supervisors, and am I thinking, oh, the City of Council Bluffs. And what we do is we ask, we come up with names, we ask them if they're interested. They fill out nomination papers, and we send it in. Each of these members has been nominated in a prior year. This year, Iowa West only has one opening, and they have a list of nominees that we have provided in the past and other people have provided in the past. This is an invitation to add to that.
Okay.
So.
So they're going to have a long list of nominees.
Yes. And then they decide, without telling us at all, if, who they're going to interview. They don't interview them all. Last year, they selected two members that we had nominated, so. And those members do not have to go in and represent us later on. They are just well-meaning community members that go in and are part of the conversation.
Any other discussion or questions? Okay, Mr. Wilson, would you please take the role?
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
All right, and the motion carries. Next, we have approval of new job descriptions. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the newly established job descriptions for youth development worker, bilingual community liaison, and middle school years program coordinator for international baccalaureate program as presented.
Thank you, Mr. LaFurla. Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Any discussion? Okay, Mr. Wilson?
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Next, we have rescission of previous open enrollment denial.
I have a prepared resolution. Whereas on September 27, 2016, at a regular board meeting of the Council Bluffs Community School District, henceforth referred to as the District, the Board of Directors, henceforth referred to as the Board, addressed a request from a parent to open enroll her child listed in the meeting agenda as student C into the District. And whereas the request by the parent was without standing, and the Board, as a duly-elected body and having the authority by State of Iowa statute to dispatch the open enrollment request, a resolution to deny open enrollment was approved by voice vote of the Board by a margin of six votes in the affirmative and one vote in the negative. Since the time of the Board's action regarding this matter, additional information, not readily available at the time of the meeting and debate, has been provided to the Board, and that this additional information may have influenced the result of the vote. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Directors for the Council Bluffs Community School District rescind the decision to deny open enrollment of student C, thereby approving the request for open enrollment into the Council Bluffs Community School District under the following conditions. One, the District will enroll the student in a building the District designates and will provide special education services as outlined on the student's current individual education plan, although not initially in a room designated to serve children with autism since that program is currently at maximum capacity. Two, the District will observe and assess the student's needs based on the required state process and procedures. Three, the IEP will be followed until such time assessment indicates that a different program or goal area should be developed for the student. At that time, an IEP meeting would be held to determine if the team agrees to meet those changes. Four, progress monitoring will be ongoing, but no less than every two weeks for all IEP goal areas. Five, transportation decisions will be determined through the open enrollment regulations. Six, the sending district will still be responsible for all costs associated with providing an appropriate special education program. I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Nowhere in that resolution did I hear when this begins.
If the Board would decide that you want to rescind that motion, we would make almost immediate contact with the parent to invite the parent to bring the child in for initial conversation. Now, there is some ongoing discussion related to suggested due process, appeal that we don't think matters to our district. And if the Board made this decision, that would most likely bring all of that conversation to an end because the decision would be made.
But the intent would be, within the foreseeable future, student C would be in our district, however long it takes you to go through those stipulations that's in the resolution.
Yes.
I mean, I think it needs to be clear that when we voted last time, we said, "No, until next year, when they move into the District." So we're going back on that a little bit, aren't we, and saying?
We absolutely are.
It'll happen a lot sooner.
Very, very true.
Any other discussion?
I'm worried if the student actually would require the special program, which is currently filled to capacity or possibly a bit beyond capacity, and whether or not the other classroom would be able to adequately serve this student before allowing the student in for an inadequate education. If we were to have the second special education teacher to be able to have room in that program, I would feel much more comfortable accepting the open enrollment request. And in fact, that was the major issue at my, at our previous vote.
That is an absolutely accurate point. The child is currently described as having autism, symptoms of autism, and we don't have room in that program. However, Becky Zorn, who is here tonight, if we want her to answer any questions, but Becky believes that we have the skill in some other classrooms that would absolutely be more helpful to this child than not attending school, which is his current.
Situation.
Situation. The parent has indicated a desire to move into the District or to opt into the District for next year. We would have time between now and then to make arrangements for that if we decided to do so. If that may come to fruition anyway, we're a little worried about having the student not be in school between now and August.
What is the student's current standing with his home school?
I can only tell you what I suspect because I have not had a conversation with his home school. We said no to the open enrollment, and you can recall, I said several times during the meeting that he could go back to his former school district, his registered school district. The mother gave every indication possible that she would not do that, and the fact that there's been some appeals makes me believe that he is not in school currently. I have not verified that. It's a difficult situation.
So not much has changed since the last board meeting?
The, no. The things that have changed are that the parent and attorney filed an appeal. The Department of Education ruled that the appeal, they didn't have jurisdiction to rule on the appeal, and encouraged them to file due process. They filed due process. Our Board currently contends that due process shouldn't be our problem. That has not come to any kind of conclusion at this point, but it will. We will have to defend that in some ways unless it's dismissed or the Board makes a move tonight to allow the District to let the child in. And I really am saying to the Board, "We will do what you tell us to do. If you decide not to rescind, then we will either wait for a decision to dismiss the due process, or we will defend the Board in the due process procedures." We'll do either of those, whatever is necessary, if that's the direction you give us. We just thought, this is actually, I described tonight's meeting to our attorney as this is out of the goodness of our hearts because you could stand with your previous decision, not come back and address it. But given the fact that we are now at the point of defending something we don't think we have to defend, we're proposing this as another option for you to consider, and we will follow your directions, whatever they may be.
I have another question. Even though the student is not attending the home district, is it our belief that even not being in that program, the student will be at least, or relatively similarly well-served, not in our special program, as that student would be in whatever program the home district would have?
You know, that's a good question I don't know the answer to. There was a disagreement, you saw it right here, between the perception on the part of the family as to whether or not the child was being served appropriately, and the special education director for the AEA and superintendent for the other district. So since we've not dealt at length with the student, and we don't, we haven't watched him in his previous district, I don't know the answer to that question. I think we could say, without any question, that the student would probably be better served in our program.
Albeit not in an autism program.
Than being homeschooled.
Well, for me, this is a classic case of trying to guard against setting precedents that may come back to harm us later and what the needs of the child are. that may come back to harm us later and what the needs of the child are. And I think it's pretty clear from the last meeting, the Board, the mother is going to be doing everything she can to have this student live in our district next year. So we will be responsible for it if that comes to fruition.
That comes to fruition.
So it's, I'm coming out thinking, it's in the best interest of the child if we try to take him this year so that we don't have so much to worry about the loss he had this year, to your point, Scott. So I think we should rescind it, and let's go forward with this and try to help this child.
Any other discussion? Mr. Wilson, would you please take the role?
Well, actually, one more comment is, when you say setting precedent, I'm also worried that if there's a request for open enroll in of another student with possibly an even more severe disability that couldn't be served except in a special program, which similarly is filled to capacity and as such, we decide not to accept that student, if that parent will say, "Well, in this previous case, they filed the due process with the District, and then they accepted them afterwards." And if we set the precedent wherein there's a student that we literally cannot serve, and then we would be happy.
I think that's probably difficult to assess, given the fact that in this situation, additional assessments were made after the fact in an attempt to see what other resources were available for this specific student. And so I think we just have to take it case by case.
And I agree with that because there's other information that came out after the decision as well that we did not have beforehand.
Any other discussion?
Just that I brought it forward because I felt that it would be in the best interest of the student to be in school. However, not the ideal program for that student. That student would be in school, whether in their home district, which is not happening, or in our district. And I'm, I guess I'm not so worried about precedent on this particular instance because we are going through the proper process. I mean, the student and the parent did not have standing. They did not have standing. I mean, they didn't meet the requirements. But as Dr. Bruckner indicated, you know, after maybe out of the goodness of our heart, I feel that it's better that the student is in school, of which I don't believe that student's in school right now.
Any other discussion? Mr. Wilson, please take the role.
So just to remind everybody, a vote for yes is to rescind the previous decision.
Correct.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I want to say thank you to the Board. I brag about you a lot, and this is one more case of our Board struggling with really hard issues and always trying to do the best thing. So, thank you. Not every Board has that capacity.
That's what we get paid the big money for.
On graduation. Move on to our approval of our consent agenda. It includes business items and at this meeting, personal action, claims, and accounts. Is there a motion?
I'll move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
And with that, motion carries. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you very much. Go kudos or not. Is there a further opinion?